Okay, good evening. Welcome to the August 20th, 2024 Voting Meeting of the Exeter Township School Board. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Feig, can you take roll call, please?
Jason Mel.
Here.
Julia Schaefer.
Here.
Deborah Bloom.
Here.
Dr. Andrea Battler.
Here.
John Fiddler.
Here.
Dr. Ann Herring.
Present.
Timothy Morgan.
Present.
Travis Odom.
Allison Wilson.
Here.
Eight present, one absent.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Feig. In addition to the eight board members in attendance this evening, we are also joined at the board table by our Solicitor Sharon Montane and members of the School District Administration, including Dr. Kristi Haller, Superintendent, Dr. Josh Hoyt, Director of Teaching and Learning, and Mr. Brian Feig, who serves as our Business Administrator and Board Secretary. First up on the agenda, we have a music recognition item from Zeswitz Music.
My department is teasing me because I had to write stuff down, but I'm getting older, so. I'm Melissa Crati, and this is the start of my 26th year teaching chorus at the Exeter Junior High. Thank you, thank you, yeah, 26 years. I am so incredibly happy tonight to be with you, recognizing the hard work of our teachers, our students, our administrators, and our community, as we were named a Best Community for Music Education for the 12th year. Music's part of our everyday life and is a feature in all of our important events and milestones as an individual, if you think of our weddings, our birthdays, our funerals, and as a nation, when you think of inaugural events, battles, and, most recently, the Olympics. Still, as we turn to music now for comfort and for celebration, it's sometimes difficult to find the time and money to support our young musicians. Thankfully, Exeter has chosen time and time again to keep music strong and available to all of its students, and we thank you. Our students have countless opportunities to learn and perform music during the school year. As a district, we performed at the State Capitol for the Celebration of Nations in Norfolk, Virginia, and for Disney's premiere event, the Candlelight Processional, with Neil Patrick Harris this past year. It was awesome. I was fangirling. Our students earn merit scholarships year after year for their music ability with the support of Reading Music Foundation, and our students represent Exeter at county, district, state, and all Eastern levels. And this summer, we also had students representing Exeter in Europe as they toured with American music abroad, and every time they posted pictures, I am happy to say they were wearing Exeter spirit wear. It was kind of awesome. The celebration for us as educators and parents, though, comes when our students choose music outside of our walls. This summer, we had students participate in Burke Summer Band, Burke Summer Strings, Burke's Youth Chorus, and various university camps to further their studies. We had students perform alongside of the Reading Pops Orchestra and with David Klein at the Coates Town Folk Festival. We had students perform in summer shows at Genesius Theater, Sycamore Stage, Reading Community Players, Reading Civic Theater, and First Street Theater, which is extremely impressive, but not the full story. The full story is that's all made possible because of our Exeter alumni. Peter Pan at Reading Civic Summer Program was taught by an Exeter alum who happens to be an Exeter teacher. Alice by Hearts, First Streets Music Director, an Exeter alum. Moana at Reading Community was taught by an Exeter alum who is also an Exeter parent. Genesius Theater Soundboard, an Exeter alum. Sycamore Stage Production of Little Women directed by an Exeter alum. And last night, another Exeter alum was named to the Board of Directors for Burke Symphonyetta. We have alumni and residents teaching music in half of the Berks County Public Schools and many more in neighboring counties and states. We have alumni teaching music in at least five universities that I know of. We have alumni performing opera internationally. We have alumni performing with Disney on Ice in the first national tour of Some Like It Hot, and several symphonies, including Reno and San Antonio. We have alumni who have performed on Disney Cruise Lines, and we have alumni who has won an Emmy for his work in film. We have alumni working on restoring 200-year-old pianos in the Philadelphia area for recording projects, and we have more alumni who are working hard in the growing field of music therapy. And we have partners right here in Exeter Township who are recognized nationally for their work in music education in Zeswitz. To further explain, the NAMM Best Communities in Music Education, please let me introduce you to Mr. Henry Pearlberg from Zeswitz.
Thank you. It's very much an honor to be here this evening to present this award. My name is Henry Pearlberg, and before I became an Education Representative for Zeswitz Music right here in Reading, I am a retired 40-year music educator from down in Delaware County, Pennsylvania, very proud of that, and also the past State President of Pennsylvania Music Educators Association. So when we talk about music education, it really has a really strong part of my heart. Thank you, Dr. Haller, Dr. Hoyt, Board of School Directors, and Mrs. Crati, for the invitation to present this recognition to Exeter Township School District. The Best Communities for Music Education Award is the signature program of the NAMM Foundation, which is the National Association of Music Merchants, which is, that's what music is a part of. It recognizes and celebrates school districts and schools for their support and commitment to music education and the efforts to ensure access to music for all students as part of a well-rounded education. And throughout the program's 25 years, the Foundation has recognized over 1,000 school districts and schools in combined 43 states. The schools and communities recognized by Best Communities for Music Education demonstrate a commitment to ensuring music learning opportunities are available for every student and provide an example for other communities to follow. This recognition reflects the commitment Exeter Township School District has made to providing a high-quality music program to its students. I would like to thank the Exeter Township District Board of School Directors, Administration, music faculty, and community for all of their support, dedication, and hard work to make sure that their students have access to a high-quality music program. And as part of this recognition, I would also like to recognize the 11 members of the Exeter Township Music Department. Micah Albright, Lorraine Selke, Elizabeth Combs, Melissa Crati, Kyle Luckinbill, Dawn Keebler, Patty Klein, Emily Repert, Heather Hafer, Nina Deliskey, Amanda Moreno. So on behalf of Zeswitz Music and the NAMM Foundation, congratulations for your 12th recognition for the Best Communities in Music Education.
Thank you, Mr. Pearlberg and Mrs. Crati, I appreciate it. Moving on, there are no amendments to tonight's agenda, and we'll go on to Superintendent's Report with Dr. Haller.
So before I begin the Superintendent's Report, I just want to extend my congratulations to the Music Department. It's no secret that we have an outstanding music program here in the Exeter Township School District. It's one of the opportunities that we offer our students where they kind of find their group of people that enjoy the same things that they do, and oftentimes, as you heard Melissa say, make a career out of doing something that they love. So thank you to the Music Department for providing these opportunities for our students. It certainly makes a world of difference for them when they walk into our schools and they see you and know that they're doing something that they so thoroughly enjoy. And thank you to the school board and our community for continuing to support our music program. We do offer music, we offer starting in third grade strings for our students, and it's something that gives them an outlet. Again, not every child is geared towards academics, not every child's geared to sports, but music is their thing. And oftentimes, I know that as a school board, you make very difficult decisions about our taxes and maintaining programs, and throughout the years, Exeter has continued to be committed to our students to provide opportunities for our students in music and the arts, and that's critical for their success here. So thank you. So now on to the other stuff. Now, we are very excited to begin school on Thursday. We're starting with two half-days for our students, so they're going to be back Thursday and Friday, and we wanted to share with the community to, if they haven't done so already, to please make sure that their parents square information is up to date, because we are already sending out alerts. Jen Breton, our Public Relations Director, is already sending out alerts to parents to keep them informed about busing information, changes to schedules, just general information that parents may need, especially our new parents, to the district who are very excited to welcome on Thursday. We also wanted to use tonight as an opportunity to share with the community a new portion of our website, and we have both Eric Seidel and Jen Breton here. Eric is our Safety and Security Coordinator, and as I said, Jen Breton is our PR Director. We take school safety here very seriously. This summer, we did a lot of work with school safety. Many of what we did this summer cannot be shared because of the sensitive nature of how we keep our students safe. But the one area that we wanted to talk to parents about and share with the community is how we communicate with parents about school safety and some of the changes that we've made to procedures when you come to our buildings, and information that if you're seeking it, where you can find it. So at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Jen and Eric to go through that information, and then hopefully our parents will log on to the website and take a minute to become familiar with it as well.
Sure. So the one big change is really how we handle visitors in the buildings. And the thing that I want to stress is, this isn't to make things difficult for parents, but we do really want to know who is coming, and in a lot of cases, when people are coming. So if we could ask a favor of sorts of parents is that if you need a meeting with a guidance counselor, if you need a meeting with a principal, please call ahead, make an appointment. That way, our secretaries know who's coming, they know they're expecting folks to come to the buildings, and we're a little bit better prepared to bring people inside. We are going to be moving forward. It won't be right away in the school year, but it will be early in the school year with visitor kiosks in our buildings, where visitors will get buzzed into the vestibule area of our buildings and then do a self-serve, so to speak, check-in process through our Raptor Visitor Management System, similar to what they do now, just in the vestibule area and not in the office area. And again, that's just to, it's just for the safety of the staff and students in the buildings, it's just to sort of maintain that first layer of security outside of those locked doors, and it shouldn't be a huge difference from what we're already doing through the Raptor system.
Can I just ask, what would they expect it to be, to do when they got to that kiosk? What information would they be looking for?
So the most important thing is please, if you have it, bring your ID with you. It is a touchscreen kiosk. It's very simple. If you're a new visitor, there will be a scanner, it's going to ask you to scan your ID. If you're a returning visitor, you'll actually be able to type your name in, find yourself on the screen, and then move forward with that. It'll follow the same process as we already do after that, printing out a name tag, a visitor tag, for that individual when they're in the building. Anything that happens on that kiosk, the folks inside the office can help out with, so if there's technical difficulties, they can help remotely from inside on their computer to help people through the process. But it should be fairly seamless once people get used to it and start coming in.
So moving along, this page, this section of our website, which you can find under the Students and Parents tab on the main page of the website, it, and it's marked, I apologize, I cannot read that far back. Visitors and Safety, thank you. But you can find a little bit about this new information as far as what is expected when you come to a building there. In addition to that, we have also wrapped our parents into what does our communication look like to parents in case we would have an emergency? And I think that a lot of times when parents are looking for our safety plans, for example, they really just want to know what part did they play in terms of keeping our kids safe. So this website just kind of goes through a little bit of what, if we did have an emergency, how would we communicate with parents? What would the methodology look like? If they had to come and pick up their child, what do they need to bring? What does that process look like? So all of these things are laid out for parents, as well as just some simple questions that they might have regarding what we do and do not communicate with parents. For example, some parents may be interested in knowing, I don't know, how an employee is reprimanded if there's a safety incident or some other incident. And due to, you know, due to HR law and stuff, we do not disclose that information. We have privacy law that we must follow. So it kind of just goes over, just sort of lays out that groundwork for what parents can expect. Dr. Haller, I don't know if you want to sort of chime in a little bit on some of the parts of this website?
Sure. The part that I want to hone in on is our relationship with Central Berks and Exeter PD. We do have a very strong relationship with both police departments, they're both, they're great to work with, but all of our schools are in the Exeter Township School District. This is the only building that's in Central Berks. So in particular, we work very closely with Exeter PD, and I want to assure parents that they are often, Exeter PD is often at our buildings. So, you know, when you're driving around the school district, if you happen to see police officers, police cars in front of our buildings, I know sometimes parents are assuming, or people are assuming that there's something that's going on, but that's not really the case. It's just because the Exeter Police Department is frequently in our buildings, just walking the halls, getting to know students, talking to administrators. Oftentimes, at the elementary buildings, they'll even pop in and have lunch with the kids, and they really enjoy that. We are working very hard to cultivate a relationship with Exeter PD and our students, so our students know that they're there to help, that these are people that are there to help them, and are excited to see them in our buildings, and that's the relationship that we want to promote with our police departments in the township. So we're grateful to both Central Berks and Exeter PD, and parents can safely assume that you will see them in our buildings on a regular basis, and your children will be telling them that they will be seeing Exeter PD in the buildings, and they are there for just a visit. So we're very happy about that. So we hope that parents are looking at this website. You know, school safety, again, is something that all schools take very seriously, and we want to assure parents that we do everything within our power to make sure that our schools are safe and secure, but if you're looking for information, there are some things that we simply just cannot share, but we wanted to put out the things that we could to let parents just have an idea of how we're doing things in our buildings. Does anybody have any questions for myself, or Eric Seidel, or Jen Breton? So again, we're going to be starting school on Thursday, and we will be sending out reminders on Parent Square, those are back, and we're looking forward to seeing all the kids back in school over the next two days, and then back again the next week, and then we're really into it. So good luck to all our families, our parents, who are going to be getting kids up. I know we have been trying to put our daughter to bed a little bit earlier to get back in the swing of things, because she is not a morning person, so, so thank you.
Okay. And next, public comments on agenda items. No one has signed up unless someone from the audience would like to come up and speak. Hearing crickets, I'm going to move on. Next is Board Meeting Minutes. If there are no objections, we'll adopt a motion to approve meeting minutes from the July 16th, 2024 Board Voting Meeting. Hearing no objections, the minutes are approved. Treasurers' Report and Payment Requests. If there are no objections, we'll adopt a motion to approve the July 2024 Treasurers' Report and Payment Request dated July 17th, 2024 to August 20th, 2024. Hearing no objections, the Treasurers' Report and Payment Requests are approved. And moving on to committees, we have Education with Dr. Battler.
Thank you, Mr. Mel. Up first is the Enrollment Report. Does anybody have any discussion on this at all?
Just want to clarify that that is still a summer estimate number that's there, so that's still subject to change, right?
Yeah, it's still subject to change. We still are enrolling students for Thursday as we speak, and we still have parents who are withdrawing students, so it is still very fluid at this point. I would like to point out, though, that the number for kindergarten at Lorraine is unusually high this year, higher than we've seen in a number of years.
Okay, good to know. Thank you.
Okay. Moving on, it is recommended that the Board of School Directors approve the Exeter Township High School TSI Targeted School for Improvement Plan for 2024-2025.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any discussion?
Questions? Okay. I went through this again and have been doing some other research and jotted down some questions. How many students are affected by this?
We're using this plan to target really for all of the high school students. It just had to be written because of, it was a targeted subgroup, but the intention is this, to have an impact on all kids.
Oh, I see, okay. That's good, that's new information. Great, thank you. And what were the criteria that the state used? Are we talking about test scores, grades in class? And what period did they look at the information that I hope to get from you?
Sure. So what PDE does is roughly around December is when they provide their school designations. And what they look at is, based upon criteria, in this case, this school, the high school, they looked at a combination of both achievement and growth data, and ELA and mathematics, and that's related to, for the high school, that's to the Keystone Exam. They look at the attendance data, that actually goes back prior, the year prior to that, and then they also look at the graduation rate from the year prior to that. But again, it's not, this plan, we weren't designated because of all of our students, we were designated because when you hit a certain number, when you hit a certain number of students in a grade level, what happens is that then becomes a potential subgroup, a designation, and if that pop, that sample size of that subgroup doesn't meet the criteria, that's the same for all students, that's how you get designated as a TSI school.
How are we notified of this?
So we are notified by a letter and slash email from PDE that goes to the superintendent. Additionally, the intermediates are also, intermediate units are also notified of all the schools in their county that are designated. There's multiple different types of designation. We're TSI, there's also something known as ATS I, which is Additional Targeted School Improvement. That's if we were to not improve with this plan, we could then get designated as ATS I, and then there's also something called CSI, which is Comprehensive School for Improvement, and those are for the lowest-performing Title I schools in the state of Pennsylvania.
So this is sort of the first tier?
This is like the little, this is like a, it's like getting an official warning when you get a speeding ticket, but you don't get a fine.
Okay. The letter, could we make that available for the public to see?
I...
I didn't retain a copy of the letter, so I may have the email, but I didn't keep the copy of the letter.
Well, either a letter or email, just, that's a question I had, if we could, the public could see it.
I think I still have it, I can do some digging for it, so.
Okay, great, thank you. Oh, are we planning on doing what the Allentown School District is doing? They have a, basically a news release on their website. Are we, do we have any plans to do that, to let everybody know?
So they're a different designation, A, because they're a Title I school, and B, because they were designated CSI. Because of that, they have different parameters as to what they have to do for communication, but it is, when you go on the public PVA site, you will see that the high school is designated as TSI. So it is something that is public across the Commonwealth.
Right, but it's not public for our residents.
Well, it's not our high school, it's a subgroup of the high school that was designated. Some school districts, their whole school has been designated, and we were not designated. So I don't want to give the public, provide a perception that it's our whole high school, because it is not.
No, but we can state in, we can state in the announcement what the subgroup is. Now, I'm confused, Dr. Hoyt, because you said we're going to use this to make changes throughout the high school. So my initial, I'm back to my initial question, how big is the subgroup that was initially identified as having problems?
I don't know the number of students offhand who are identified as special education, but what happens is the state will say, if you have, I believe it's 20 in a subgroup, 20 is the threshold, whether you have 20, 40, 100, 300, once you hit that certain number, that becomes a subgroup.
Jess Kaiser, our Special Ed Supervisor for Secondary Education, is here, she can answer that.
There's 291 students at the high school that are special education.
Okay, so they would be the subgroup.
Yes.
Right, and it's the percentage of those students that didn't meet that criteria, so. And there's, they have thresholds at the state that you have to meet, and it's a formula. It is, I'm a math person, and it is a statistically significant formula that they arrive using different parameters to come up with those identifiers.
And I was on that meet, that first meeting with both, it was myself, Dr. Hoyt, Mrs. Harris with the state, and there were so many participants that we couldn't even get on, because they overbooked the meeting, because there were so many schools that they had designated. And frankly, it's unfair to our special education students, because some of the students, they don't graduate in the cohort that they are identified in, because they can spend extra time in our schools, because that is permissible. And, but yet, we get penalized, we get penalized for that, because they don't graduate with our cohort. So it's conflicting, there's a conflict there with what we're required to do and what we're required to do. In addition, the Keystone's are a grade-level assessment, so the kids are taking a bio-assessment, they're taking a literature assessment, they're taking an algebra assessment, and many of our students, if not most, at the high school are identified because they have a reading disability, and they have to take biology or the literature, and they're doing it with a disability, with essentially little to no accommodations, which is why so many people are very upset about having our population identified, because they can't meet that same standard as the other students. Now, not saying that we write kids off, because we most certainly do not, and that's why Dr. Hoyt is saying that the strategies that are identified in this plan, we're going to use for all students, because strategies that can help students who struggle can also benefit any student that might have a difficulty in learning some type of content. It just essentially boils down to best practice. But the reality of the situation, and Jess is here, and I want to put her on the spot, is that there's a possibility that we have kids at that, at the high school right now, through no fault of their own, because they're, they have a learning, they have a learning disability that could potentially be reading on a fifth-grade level, and they're expected to take an assessment for kids who are reading at a 10th-grade level. That's a, that's a gap that no school will ever be able to fix, because it's so significant, and it's not the child's fault. They have a, they have a learning disability, and they were identified with a learning disability. I think personally... I think personally, the fault is that we're being penalized for something that a child is, we have a struggling child, and that's, that's really difficult.
Don't we have, I mean, we've heard Dawn talk often about the assistance for these kids. Don't they have, don't we have people who can help them with their reading disability?
We do, but that's not, there's assistance, and we teach students with learning disabilities over school. That's what we do. But we're still testing students at a reading level that they're not reading on.
And they're not allowed to use any of that assistance when they take that test.
And they're not allowed to use any of that.
Because it's a standardized test.
All right, so what are we doing to work with the state to get that changed? If this is so unfair, it seems to me we ought to be doing something about it.
I think there's a lot of things unfair at the state, John. I would, I have a list of things that we could be doing at the state to get changed.
This is number one on my list tonight.
And I don't, and I don't know that the state, I don't know that PDE necessarily agrees with this either, but this comes from, you know, standardized testing comes back from No Child Left Behind, which is now the Every Student Shall Succeed Act. So like, yeah. So, I mean, standardized testing is more of a federal mandate that states then have to implement according to certain guidelines, and it's very complicated. But we do have this designation, and, you know, those are still our students, and we're going to do everything we can to support them. It's unfortunate that we have a designation like this, but it certainly doesn't reflect or mean that our schools are not good, or educators aren't doing the very best that they can, or that we don't have supportive parents who want their child to succeed and have the best education possible, which is, you know, why I really struggle with this designation in the first place, because I think that Exeter is excellent, and I think we have some of the best educators, and we have an outstanding special education program. And it's just very unfortunate that we have this label, but we have this plan, and we're going to work this plan and do everything we can. And I would suggest that, you know, as educators, we speak all the time how unfair standardized testing is, but advocacy also comes from school boards because you're elected officials and represent the community. And so I think it's really important that there's advocacy on that part as well because, you know, we, we see it, but also you're part of this as well, and we need that help.
We had this, what, four years ago, was it, Josh? The TSI in the high school, three years ago?
That was my correct when I did some investigation, yes.
Okay. So it strikes, I'm thinking back to my career when we had large-scale problems. The Three Mile Island accident was a large-scale problem. And when the dust settled, figuratively speaking, because there was no dust, lots of improvements were made, not only at our plant, but at power plants across the country. So we went through this TSI three years ago in the high school. Didn't somebody create a long list of lessons learned so that we could avoid going through this again? That's, that's one of the questions I got from a resident.
Well, the, the TSI plan from three and a half years ago was a much different designation with this one was, because the state changed the parameters from three and a half years ago. So what they needed to work on prior, from my understanding, again, I wasn't here at that time, is different than what needed to be done now, because this was around attendance and graduation rate. The state, when, when that first year came out, I was working for the intermediate unit and was on the statewide groups for, as a school improvement facilitator for school districts, specifically for Allentown and Reading. And there were still a lot of questions and concerns about how schools are being designated and how to fully support them. So I would say, since that time, they've done a much better job trying to hone in on exactly what schools need from there. So I'm not saying I wouldn't put too much credence into what that plan was three and a half years ago, because I don't even know what the details of that plan was, because, again, I wasn't here. But I'm really confident in what we're going to be able to do with this one moving forward and the support we're going to be able to provide.
So is one, is one of your goals to help our students do better in these tests?
That is one of the subgoals, absolutely, but I think it's more importantly to make sure that we're giving kids the best possible education in that high school and giving them the best opportunities. And since attendance was one of the areas, we want to make sure they're, they're coming to school, and if not, why are they not coming to school, and how can we support them? Another component was around graduation rate, so we want to figure out what is it that we can get kids to do so that we can get them to graduate on time. And we have a really good graduation rate. But our Keystone and math and ELA scores absolutely are areas we want to improve. We spent the last year taking a look at data, CDT data, classroom data. We developed a data culture of practices in all of our buildings and did a lot of work. That's Dr. Alcarro, our department chairs, the high school administration, high school special education, did a remarkable job looking at that data to try to make instructional decisions so that this year we can start to take a look at instructional practices and move forward. This is not a one-year fix. This is something that's going to take time. You know, as Dr. Haller said, this, this, to answer a question you initially stated, this was a plan we had to put in place on, for 24-25, on 2022-2023 data. Our students already took their assessments in 2024, so it could very well turn out in December that we get designated in a different area based upon that assessment data, which has nothing to do with this plan from this assessment data. So that's why, in my opinion, the system is a little broken, because you're always trying to play catch-up and trying to put things in place with the event that things could really change in a totally different direction in a couple months.
Yeah, and John, because, you know, I know that you're deeply interested in this. The other piece that is unbelievable is, you know, parents have the opportunity to opt their children out. And we do see that parents opt their children out, and some of them are special education families, because they don't want their child to have to sit through a test that they don't believe that they can be successful in, and that's certainly a parental choice. But whenever someone opts their child out of either the PSSAs or the Keystone's, that counts against us, almost like they failed.
It's counted as a failure?
It counts against us, yes. So it's, as Josh said, it's really, it's not a win for us.
I know, I just want to add one little layer for you. One of the areas we got dinged on was attendance. Attendance is defined as chronic absenteeism, which is being to your absent more than 10% of the school year, which in this case would be more than 18 days. The student, there's a population of the students that we were designated for that had legitimate excuses for extreme needs that missed more than that time and had very specific reasons for that, and we were, we were dinged for that, which, in my opinion, is completely unacceptable, but there's, that is completely out of our locus of control, and all we can try to do is advocate. But it's morally and ethically wrong that kids have specific needs for health, whatever it being, and they get dinged for missing school for those situations, so.
Well, I remember, too, in the comprehensive plan, there was a section, if memory serves correctly, at the junior high, the absentee was, absentee levels were very high. Is that, am I remembering correctly?
They, they weren't, they were elevated. They weren't too, too high, but they were elevated, so, yes.
Okay. And finally, a question for our solicitor, and this came up in a conversation. If a family wanted to sue us because we were not providing their child with the education that state law says we have to provide, and they use this TSI designation as their basis for the lawsuit, can you talk about any precedent in that area?
No. This is, this has to do with, really, it's a funding issue. The state, the feds, through the state and down, they create these, these reports and these data, data monitoring things to comply with funding mandates. It doesn't give any parent an individual right, with one big asterisk, several, you know, the William Penn Fair Funding lawsuit, but that wasn't an individual family. There's no individual right, except for in students with disabilities. I'm not talking about that, but the regular, typical student and resident, nothing about these designations gives an individual right to sue your school district because you were designated. Even the most extreme designation, that wouldn't give any parent the right to sue their own school district.
And the ironic piece of all this is, we get very little funding from the federal government through the title, through the title grants, like, very little funding. But this is where most of this is coming down from. And schools that are failing, they get a lot of money. So we are a strong academic school. Yes, we have this designation, but overall, the quality of education in Exeter is very high, and we have a 96% graduation rate, and yet, we, we're getting designated, and we're not getting any more funding. But schools who are failing, who are doing really poor, they're getting additional funding. So, you know, but you don't get funding when you're successful. So that's, that's really, that's, that's really a crime, that's really a crime for our community. So, you know, that, that is very unfortunate.
Yeah, and Mr. Fidler, if anybody gets questions about the plan, they're always welcome to reach out to me, and I'm happy to sit with them and go through the plan and explain everything. It is a very convoluted process, I understand, and when you look at a document like that, it's 40, 50 pages long. I can explain in detail and transparency with it. But I did want to echo what Dr. Haller said. This is a mandate that's completely unfunded. If you are designated CSI, which is a, like I said, the lowest performing title schools, you do get CSI funds, but those are, change every year, and you are then directed as how you have to spend it. Whereas here, this is something that we're required to do, and we have to use our existing budget to be able to support it.
Okay, thank you very much.
You can tell we're very, we're very passionate about this, very passionate.
So am I.
Okay. I just have one discussion point, just for the board's recollection. We first reviewed the TSI plan at the July voting meeting. It was under a 30-day review, and that is why we are voting on it tonight. Any other discussion?
Yeah, I just wanted to highlight that, the part of that is, is this has to be submitted to the state. That's why we're doing that. It is due to the state by September 15. So if it's approved tonight, I will then upload it following the meeting approval to PDE.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it, motion carries.
It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approve the purchase of handwriting without tiers, cursive handwriting materials for grades three through six. The total cost is $21,019.16, and this will be covered with ESER funds. Also, shipping and handling costs were reduced from 10% to 6% for a total savings of $833.38.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Whoever's doing that, negotiating on shipping costs, keep it up.
I, I thank you. It is Mrs. Becky Bush over here. So I did just want to highlight that I know from our committee, we always like to have things on the Cal prior to coming to a voting meeting, and this was not something that was on the Cal. And the reason for that was is, we were not satisfied with the quote, and we didn't, we felt we could negotiate some more. But the reason why we didn't delay it to September is, is the teachers do need these resources to start the school year. So that is why it was not on the Cal, and we're asking it to be voted on this evening. We also wanted to be transparent because these are being used through the ESER supply funding as well. But these are just, it's not a textbook, it's a supplemental resource for handwriting in the classroom for grades three to six, to embed within their writing with handwriting instruction every, every two to three days.
Okay, I just wanted to add one thing. This will finish up our ESER spending. We actually had $20,943.41 left, so we're about $70 coming out of our pocket on this, but we spent every single US dollar we were given.
Just a question.
If this is approved.
Sorry. Just a question worth nothing, really, but do we still have in elementary school classrooms those green boards with the, with the writing for each letter, capital and small letter?
So we have a lot of different resources that we use. Some of them are digital now to use, but we do have models and visuals up there for the different handwriting, the staffs and such like that for kids to be able to see. So I don't know if every single classroom, but every classroom does have something of some more sort of visual for that.
We, schools, public schools, for a long time, have gotten away from taking time to teach students how to print and handwriting. In our foundations program that we use kindergarten first and second, that has a component where you teach students how to print. And there is research that shows that that ability for students to print is, is very important for development. There is also research out there that cursive writing, learning how to write in cursive, is also very important and also helps students develop with their ability to retain information. And we believe here that students do need to learn, they need to write. And it's great for them to develop keyboarding skills, but students also need to be able to print, and they need to be able to sign their name. And with the information that we note is, is out there about also the development piece, that's why we are bringing this back. This will be a reoccurring cost, so even though we're doing the initial purchase through ESER funds, this next year will be part of the budget because it's something that we're going to have to order every, every year to be able to teach students how to write.
I have a quick question. And I completely agree with you. I think that writing is absolutely essential, especially if you want to read our founding documents and anything else. Excuse me. The question that I had was regarding grades three through six. Were, has this always, you said that sometimes it's been taught, sometimes it hasn't been taught? Because I know that one of my children learned it, one of them didn't. So is this something that we should, as parents, be aware of? We might be teaching ourselves, or is this now going to be taught across the?
Becky, do you want to come up and answer it? While she's coming up, I will tell you that for a long time, it wasn't taught. So, and some teachers did continue to teach it because we did have reproducibles, so some of the teachers made time to teach it, and, and others did not. It was not a standard practice. So I'll let Becky talk a little bit about how, what the change looks like.
Yeah, sure. So one of our goals as a teaching and learning department and as a district is to create more consistency across our grade level spans K to 12, because for a long time, with all of the changes, we didn't have that consistency in our programming. And now that our teaching and learning department is here and it's whole, we have some goals that we like, you know, we want to implement as the years go by, and this was one of the first ones. Because as Dr. Haller said, as students who are learning to write with their, you know, with their hands, it's very tactile, it's directly related to your brain functioning. And the more explicit instruction you get and practice with handwriting, the better that you recognize letters and the automaticity. And students write 30 to 60% of their day. And if they are struggling as a writer and they don't receive this instruction, then in all of their subject areas and across the content, they are going to be struggling as well because they can't get that written down, they can't get it written down well. So, you know, Dr. Hoyt was just talking about TSI. One of the things that we're doing in the lower grades to help support the upper grades is implement things throughout the year so that our students, when they get into the high school, into the middle school, that they have those foundational skills already ingrained and that they can be more successful.
Well, I appreciate that you're doing that because I was quite, I despaired over the fact that my child was not learning how to write cursive.
Well, this year, we will give it a go.
Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it, motion carries.
It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approves the following education committee items, sorry. Item one, the following field trips beyond the 60-mile radius, the following staff conferences, and... Oh, you know what? Can we just do all of them? Thanks. One through seven.
Second.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it, motion carries. Okay, and that's it for you, Dr. Battler?
Yes.
All right, Personnel Committee with Mrs. Wilson.
Okay, you may have remembered that we cleared our agenda. At the Cal, we had a voting meeting, but of course, it's a very busy time of year, so we do have a lot more on the personnel agenda tonight. So it is recommended that the Board of School Directors approves or ratifies the following personnel items. Number one, resignations of certificated staff and support staff.
Second.
Second.
Okay, we, we have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Ayes have it, motion carries.
It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approves or ratifies the following personnel items. Appointments: certificated staff, support staff, extracurricular staff, the certificated substitute roster, guest teachers roster, substitute staff roster, and the mentor list.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Ayes have it, motion carries.
It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approves or ratifies the following personnel items. Number three, transfers of certificated staff, support, and support staff.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Ayes have it, motion carries.
It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approves or ratifies the following personnel items. Number four, change of status of certificated staff and support staff.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Ayes have it, motion carries.
It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approves or ratifies the following personnel items. Number five, additional assignments for support staff and classroom moves.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Ayes have it, motion carries.
And then finally, it is recommended that the Board of School Directors approves or ratifies the following personnel items. Number six, leaves of absence, and number seven, the attached list of course requests.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Ayes have it, motion carries.
And that is all, everything.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Wilson. Finance and Audit Committee, Mr. Morgan.
Thank you, Mr. Mel. This is a consent agenda. We're going to go ahead and approve both items. It's recommended that, or not approve them, but make a motion for them. It is recommended the Board of School Directors approves the following finance and audit items, number one and number two.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Ayes have it, motion carries.
That's all for me.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan. Facilities and Transportation Committee, Mr. Fidler.
It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approve the following facilities and transportation items. Number one, that we approve or move on the attached project development agreement from Train for the development of a solar system at a Watten Creek Elementary School.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion?
I do. Is Train here?
No.
I didn't ask him to come. After our meeting, I just took some time. I did have some questions. I don't think it's anything the district's going to be able to answer. Some of the questions I had were, how much would it cost to remove the system once the system has aged? We also did not seek multiple bids, and I guess my question for, for Mr. Feig is, what is the, do we have a percent chance that we're going to get this grant? And what the, what the percent chances that we're going to get the grants in the future year over year? The first year, I'm saying we have probably a 75% chance, because there's just no one out there with the shovel ready. There's a minimum of $25 million they're going to give out, $5 million at a time. They're already talking about funding the following years, and Representative Fidler, who put the bill out and got the grant and got consensus from the whole state, really wants us to move forward. I mean, they keep on calling me and asking if we go towards some other facilities. I've seen the other facilities. We're, we're so far ahead there, when else, I'm, I'm saying about 75% sure. Now, do we get a full $5 million the first year? Do we get 2.5? That might be a difference, because they're only putting $25 million out there. There's a lot of schools that haven't even looked to see if they can put it in their, their municipality. This past week, we got word from Med, MedEd, that the rebates are $0.05 a kilowatt hour minimum right now, through at least October. They're talking $0.10 a kilowatt hour, so if we did the full system, we'd be getting somewhere around $700,000 in rebates. Train, I think, only put half that, because they know the $0.05 is guaranteed, but right now, the MedEd is putting in higher. I think the last time we had questions on the S-Rex, if you took out the S-Rex, it still pays for itself in 3.8 years. As I said before, I'm, I'm not looking at this, this as a green. I'm trying to look to how we can save money down the road, or avoid large tax increases down the road. If we can save $700,000 a year, or even $600,000, $600,000 is a half a mil, $700,000 is a little bit more than a half a mil. So, you know, I'm just, I already know we have a system there that's saving us, you know, $120 hours a month, and it's an old system, and all it's doing is running the lights in the library. But it's still working, and that was put in in 2012. The only maintenance we had to do on that was $500 switch, because that's not tied into the grid. It actually, when the power goes out, it has to shut the thing off, so the grid can't come back and hit it. You know, I, I'm just looking to try to save us money down the road. Yeah, I, I appreciate it. I, unfortunately, I've been back and forth on this for two weeks, and reread all the reports. I've listened to Train, I went back and listened to the meeting. My issue right now is, is the same issue that I had when we looked at it the first time, and that is that I'm just not the smartest guy in the room when it comes to this. I don't know what we're getting. It looks good, I'm all for saving money, I understand the concept, and, and I believe in the concept. It's not about whether I think we shouldn't have solar, we should have solar. I'll say the same thing I said last time, and that is that I would have much rather see a third-party consultant come in and say, this is the kind of system we should do, that we believe in these grants, that we understand, that we believe that the direction that we're going in is the right direction. For us to spend $28,000 right now and ask Train to do that, I think Train has a vested interest in showing us that it's the right system for us to buy. So I am all for continuing this discussion, and I'm all for bringing in a third-party consultant that can give us a, a viewpoint not reflective of one of Train's or another company, but for right now, this is a no for me.
Does that exist, a third-party consultant that can come in and give us?
We, when we went through this last time, Mr. Fidler asked us to look, we went to PSBA, but every third-party consultant out there was tied to some manufacturer or some back end, either like the one we had, we had a company that was basically pushing PPAs, because there's money out there for private industry to invest in these, and then charge you over the 20-year period. We would have had a straight, flat electric gate from that, but, you know, rates can go up and down, and someone's going to make money off it. I was looking at this, is because we would own it.
Yeah, and just for recalling, the PPA was the deal we looked at with the prior solar project, where it was like a 28-year lease agreement.
Yeah, they basically built it, they owned it, and they charged us for electric on a flat rate. This is not, once we have the grant, this is basically putting all the engineering in place, that the MedEd will accept it. We already know they will, they've always started doing some background work. This is to get the grant. Once the grant's there, we will have to have three different bids for the actual installer of the panels, the whole bit. The state's going to require that they're US-made, so right now, I think there's four manufacturers in the states that make panels, so we'll probably at least get four panel, you know, bids on that. But someone has to, what do you want to call it, put the bid package out? You know, so that, that's, Train is more of a engineering firm that puts the package out, they aren't building it, you know?
Can, can we use the remaining ESER funds for consulting to pay for this?
We just spent over.
Okay. Well, I didn't know that was consulting or not, so I know that was a...
No, no, we, that is the last penny on the ESER.
What happens, and I didn't really get a clear answer at the latest meeting, if we devote the $28,900 to this and we don't get the grant, we're out of that money then?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's just like if we hired an architect to design a building, and to build the building, you'd still have the initial architect fees.
Okay.
We're not necessarily out, right? We don't get the grant, we could, we could vote to pay for the system. Right.
Yeah, well, right. It adds a, I think, a complication to that.
Understood, but anyway, it doesn't necessarily mean we're out, right? I mean, there are still other options to build the system.
What, and I would imagine if we paid the, the amount, and we didn't get the grant this year, we could potentially get the grant next year, and that would still apply for any of that upfront work they would, they would do.
See, I, we're usually, I say I'm 75%, it might even be more, because there's only one other district in Berks County that's looking at it right now, and their problem is they want to do a roof, and there's a lot of fight, because they're going to have to first redo the roofs before they put the, the panels on the roof, because you don't want to put panels on the roof in five years, take them off to, you know, put a new roof on. So they're probably two or three years out to, to be able to do it. And a lot of other districts do not have the land. I mean, the, the state thought this would be great for all schools, but your city schools don't have land, so they'd have to put on the roofs. Most schools, like, you know, any other school, you know, their maintenance has not been there, so if you're going to put something on a roof, you know, you want to make sure you replace the roof before you do it, so you don't have to move it for 20 or five or 30 years. So that's why I say we're ahead now. Next year, I'm sure there's going to be more people in it, but they're also talking about doubling the funding if they can put it all out this year, and, you know, have a number of applications. So that's why I'm pretty sure it's, it's a short turnaround time, they want to make sure the money goes out, so they can fund again the following years.
Okay. Yes, Ms. Bloom?
When we discussed this two weeks ago, Train admitted that they didn't factor in certain costs, including maintenance and removal costs. Will they provide a new cash flow estimate?
Yeah, you know, my problem is, you know, they said, okay, there's maintenance costs, they can wipe the, the panels down every year. We've had the panels on the Watten, and we're still 94%, and no one's going up on that roof and wiping them down. So I'm not really sure if you want to go into a contract that someone can out and wash off your panels. You know, it seems like the rain does that. There's a lot of, what do I want to say, ancillary businesses that make money off of, it's sort of like all the warranties they try to sell you when you buy something.
I understand, but it, it wasn't a line item, and Train didn't.
But we'll still have to mow, you know, cut the grass once a year, but we're cutting the grass most of the time anyway.
But what Train admitted, though, at the meeting, that the cash flows were not as good as they showed in their document. So I would actually, even if it's $5 less, I'd like to see an amended cash flow.
Well, I know Carlisle pays $30,000 a year to have someone come in and mow theirs twice a year, and they have 14 acres under. You know, I learned from Carlisle's, they originally put in the panels that moved to the sun, and they made them stationary after the fourth year, because they were constantly replacing motors.
But different cash flows are going to affect our payback period, and they're also going to affect our piece of how much we're going to have to pay.
Right, the same point, though, is if the grant comes back, the federal money comes back, the, the rebates, we're only looking at maybe maximum a million out of pocket, which is not even a year and a half electric bills, and then you have zero electric.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
I'd, I'd still like to see them factored into our cash flows.
Yeah. And I mean, that stuff will all be, have to be put together in the application, and, you know, just like the connection and the connection fees, it doesn't look like there's going to be much for MedEd, because they do have the capacity out there.
And any disposal fees at the end of the contract, you should also be accounted for in the cash flow.
Yeah, that's what we'd have to look at.
Yes.
You know, because you're talking 25, 30 years on a panel.
Mm-hmm.
So it's just like disposal, if you take, you know, redo a roof at the end of 20 years, you have to dispose of your old roof, right? And put a new one up.
I teach capital budgeting, and you know, in capital budgeting, you always wind up where you start.
Yeah.
You know, you always dispose of the project at the end.
Yeah.
I just want to say that I feel like we're constantly asking our administrators to address rising costs in our district, and this is what Brian is recommending to us. And because I trust him, and, you know, I, he's brought this to us, I am going to agree with this tonight.
Okay, yeah, I, I will say from my end, the last agreement that we had, PPA agreement that I thought was awful, and Mr. Feig has heard me probably go on and on about how I'm, I'm glad that we did not enter into that agreement. This, I, I do feel is a little more comfortable from my end, because we are not trying to do a large system right out of the gate. We are starting small, and so just a, probably a quarter of the size that we were originally planning when we talked about this, I would think, somewhere around there.
About 40%.
40%? Okay. And the, you know, just a reminder, tonight, the commitment that we're voting on is not a commitment to move forward completely with solar, it's a commitment to pay the fee to have Train come in and start doing all the assessment and the development, and it's one step closer to moving forward with that. And with the grants that is out there, with the incentive tax credit, and with the S-Rex, I, I feel like it would be an opportunity here, basically, to put in a system for very low cost on our end, versus what we were looking at in that PPA agreement a year ago, when we were fronting probably close to 12 or so million dollars of our own money, even though it was spread out over many years. This, this seems like a much more attractive deal to, to try to move forward with.
And if you remember, I was on the edge on the PPA. I was more concerned about keeping a level bill, because we were going from 3.2 cents a kilowatt hour to 7.2 cents, which we're now at 6.1 cents, but still trying to keep a level bill to keep from rising costs going up, you know, this year, trying to keep, drop the bill.
Any other discussion? Mr. Feig, can I just see you do roll call, please?
Okay.
Roll call vote, I should say. Thank you.
All right. Dr. Andrea Battler?
No.
Deborah Blum?
Yes.
John Fidler?
Yes.
Dr. Ann Herring?
Yes.
Jason Mel?
Yes.
Timothy Morgan?
No.
Travis Odom, absent. Julia Schaefer?
Yes.
Allison Wilson?
Yes.
Six yes, two no.
Okay. Ayes have it, motion carries then.
And that's it for my report.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Fidler. Moving on to Policy Committee with Dr. Herring.
Okay. It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approves the following policies: number 800, number 815, number 815.1, number 816, number 830, and number 830.1. Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Ayes have it, motion carries.
That's everything, Mr. Mel.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Herring. Mr. Odom is obviously absent tonight. Did, Mrs. Wilson, do you have an update from him?
I, I do. He just, he texted me just to tell everyone that fall sports have all started at the high school, and junior high starts with the first day of school, and the first football game is already this Friday night at Daniel Bunn.
Okay, thank you very much. Exeter Community Education Foundation, Mrs. Schaefer.
Thank you, Mr. Mel. Two weeks ago, it was with heavy hearts that we shared the news of the passing of Dr. Harland Kutcher, one of our founding board members and emeritus trustees. Harland and his wife Carol played an instrumental role in creating ECEF, and worked tirelessly for years in honor of our purpose to bring opportunities to the students of Exeter Township School District. As we mourn the loss of Harland, we celebrate his life and legacy, including the $25,000 Kutcher Math and Science Awards Endowment that he and Carol established in 2021. Our thoughts continue with the Kutcher family and loved ones. Kucher family and loved ones. We would like to thank our sponsors, golfers, donors, and volunteers for a successful golf outing on August second at the Redding Country Club. We are proud to announce this year's event raised thirty-six thousand four hundred twenty-eight dollars. Many thanks to our special events team for doing an amazing job, especially our co-chairs, Megan Blue and Kristy Weller. Save the date for Friday, November eighth, as we host our second ECEF Casino Gala. We had so much fun last year that we're doing it again, and this time at a new Redner, at the new Redners Event Center at First Energy Stadium. We hope you'll join us. Please keep an eye out on our Facebook event page for details as the planning for the gala is underway. We are again running our Eagles Nest fundraiser with the Alumni Association. Sponsored signs are hung on the fence on the hill outside Don Thomas Stadium, including new signs that can be student-specific. If you're interested in advertising your business or showing your student athlete support, please reach out to us. Thank you, that's all.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Schaefer. Berks Career and Technology Center Joint Operating Committee, as well as BCIU Board of Directors, Mr. Fidler.
Thank you, Mr. Mel. For the BCTC, after a month of July off, we meet again for August. We'll be meeting Wednesday out at the BCTC East, and the Berks County Intermediate Unit, again, after a month off, met last week, and I forwarded updates to the board members last week, and I have nothing to add to that report, and that's it for me.
Thank you, Mr. Fidler. Let's see, Legislative PSBA Liaison, Dr. Herring.
Thank you. The Senate has been adjourned until September sixteenth, and the House of Representatives will return to session on September twenty-third, so nothing to report now.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Herring. Township Borough Liaison, Mr. Morgan.
No report at this time?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Morgan. Next, our public comments for non-agenda items. We have no one signed up unless someone would like to come up to the podium and speak. Was that a, were you nodding?
I'm surprised, yes.
Oh, go, go ahead. Okay, never mind, sorry, I misinterpreted. Okay, are there any board members that would like to be heard at this time? Go ahead, Mr. Fidler.
Yes, I, in response to what Dr. Hoyt said about these tests that are apparently unfair for some kids because of disabilities or learning problems, emotional problems, all kinds of problems, I wonder if we could discuss as a board what we can do to work with, I mean, I thought PBSa was supposed to be doing this kind of thing for us. I think they've let us down before. Maybe we should be talking to legislators. Maybe we should be, have a meeting at the Department of Education, take a bus and go meet with Dr. Mumine, who's a local, a local guy, was superintendent of Redding School District for, what, five years or so? Did very well, well enough to go to the, to go to Harrisburg. I don't want to just sit back and watch our kids fail because these tests are unfair. So, I just, I don't know what to do. I'm just throwing it out there that, I don't even know what committee it should be in, maybe education, I don't know, to, to do something.
Well, yeah, I mean, it, it's definitely the, the job of every director here to, to be an advocate for public education and to, can, you know, communicate with our legislators, and we do have Dr. Herring as kind of our liaison to get those messages to our legislators. So, I'm sure that is further, you know, further things that we can look into to see, you know, what we want to do as, as far as outreach. Okay?
Yes?
So, I, I'd just like to say, as we start our new school year, this is the beginning of my third year serving as superintendent of Exeter, and I just want to say that it has been an absolute pleasure serving in this role, and I'm very appreciative for the board that I get to work with. You are all truly advocates for our students in our district, and I appreciate mostly how you challenge us as an administration to make sure that we're doing great things for kids here, because we all are working really hard to make sure that we have opportunities for our students, and that this is a nice place to work for our employees, and we wouldn't be able to do all these things without the support of the board. So, as we enter into the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, I just wanted to make sure that we said thank you on behalf of all of us for everything that you do, and we are hopeful that as we enter into the school year, that you are in our buildings, and you see our teachers, and you see our kids, so you can, you know, actually experience the joy of being in our buildings day after day and, and how exceptional our teachers are.
Thank you, and thank you, Dr. Haller, and all of the administrative team. I want to say especially to, for Eric and Jen for all of that safety information. That was a lot of work, so thank you to that. And as we prepare for the new school year, all of our staff for everything they've done, like, oh, the schools look great, and, you know, kids are excited to come back. So, thank you for every, to everyone for all that you do.
Yeah, I, I just want to add, yesterday was the staff's first day back, and we, we got to all congregate, administration, some board members, as well as teachers and staff at the junior high auditorium. We got to see firsthand how nice it looks now, that no more wood paneling. The yellow mustard seats are completely gone. It's actually blue and white. It's amazing to look at. It, the sound system was amazing. We got to play some, some great music, shoot some T-shirts out in the audience, and something I never thought I'd say, but I actually got beaten up by a minor league baseball mascot as well yesterday, and I never thought that would happen to me, but it was, it was a great time. So, thank you for, for putting that on. Well, yes, it was something on my bucket list, actually. Thank you.
And may I add that your T-shirt cannon skills are most impressive.
Oh, thank you. Thank you.
We need to go back to the high school, though, so like, there's more like launch angle.
Yeah, yeah, the ceiling's a little low.
I just would like to say, I was at the, I didn't make it yesterday, but I was at the Meet the New Teachers Celebration last week. We have some fantastic new teachers. I got to spend a few minutes with a new writing teacher at, which is one of my interests at the junior high school, and she's very enthusiastic about it, so it was, it was a sort of a precursor to the big one yesterday, but it was nonetheless very effective, and the cheerleaders welcomed them into the admin building. It was a sight to see, so thank you.
Thanks for sharing. Anyone else? Okay. Our next meeting will be our Committee of the Home meeting on Tuesday, September third at six P.M. If there are no objections, we'll adjourn them.